And I only had 20 minutes.
Oh, oh, wow.
I kept thinking this.
So when it's time to do the pledge of allegiance, you're going to know the pledge of allegiance? Would you mind leaving us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah.
All right, that would be excellent.
Sit down, calm down, we'll get there.
Get them girls all hyped up.
I know, they were super excited about it. Ready to make it happen. Two hundred. All right. I, you take off whenever they're ready to sneak out. That's plenty fine. Thank you for joining us. Wow.
We do, we do have a Girl Scout on Zoom as well.
It's so exciting to see the chambers full. I love it. Well, good evening and thank you for joining us. For the City of North Pole Regular Council Meeting, today's date, February 18th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Williams? Ms. Clack?
Here.
Mr. Claus? Ms. Glab?
Here.
And Mayor Church?
Present.
And I want to say welcome back, Ms. Clack. It's nice to see you back in chambers.
Thank you.
Um, with that, we'd like to have you stand and say the pledge and Troop Girl Scout 200 will lead us in the pledge. And Councilman Anton Keller will lead us in the invocation after that, so please remain standing.
States of America, the city of Charlotte wishes fans one nation under God, indivisible, together for all.
All right, let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for this opportunity that we have to come here to discuss the, the needs of, of the community. We ask you to please bless us with thy Spirit. As we make decisions and discuss things of importance, we ask you to please bless these young future leaders within the Girl Scouts. And they may be able to continue to learn about public service as well as how to become upright citizens. May I say to please continue to bless their leaders with continued comfort and guidance and, and patience as well. And we say these things in the name of our Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much for that, Troop 200 and Councilman Keller. That brings us to approval of the agenda.
There, I move to approve our agenda tonight.
I'll second that.
Move to amend the agenda by, under new business, uh, item C, liquor license renewal 2227, moving that to consent agenda. And then also item E, the request to counsel for the utilities roundup to postpone that action until the next city council meeting on March 3rd, 2025.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussions or changes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the agenda and the changes to the agenda.
On the agenda, uh, as amended, Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Clack?
Yes.
Ms. Glab?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
Yes.
On the agenda for this evening, Ms. Clack?
Yes.
Ms. Glab?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
Yes.
And those both passed by a seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. That brings us on to item number five. It's the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on February 3rd, 2025.
There, move to approve the, uh, minutes from February 3rd, 2025.
Second. Thank you, Councilman Claus and Councilman Keller. Any discussions or changes? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
On the minutes from the February 3rd meeting, Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Glab? Mr. Claus? Ms. Clack?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
Yes. Brings us to item six, communications from the mayor. So at our last meeting, um, the council asked i- if I would write a letter, which I hopped right on in opposition to the new EPA energy ratings. Um, sent that out to the interior delegation to include the lieutenant governor, governor, as well as Murkowski, Sullivan, and Baggage's office. Um, it was a success, so they went ahead and, and extended the comment period, closed at 11:59 on February 7th. Opened it back up at 12:01 February 8th for another 30 days. Um, I also attended last Tuesday, the Energy for All Alaskans meeting, where they had the head of the EPA in Alaska, along with the Alaska DEC and our uh, EPA representative here in Fairbanks. Um, talking about the new regulations, how that would affect us. Um, I, I did speak a little bit and asked them to consider being more specific with their new regulations in relation to the energy rating. Um, because it wasn't very well thought out, essentially doubling the letter that, uh, that I wrote to the interior delegation. Um, Councilman Claus, thank you for, for mentioning this at our last meeting. Um, because of what you said during your closing comments about the bus stop, I thought about it and I did write a letter to Mayor Hopkins, asking him to add a bus stop at Three Bears to support them and also to the VA clinic. Um, he said he was going to look into that and, uh, do what he could to make that happen.
Thank you.
So, um, we donated eight items. Um, they were Santas and other Christmas decorations that were in this closet. There was quite a bit of dust on them. We actually tried to take them to auction. Um, to sell them in the auction house refused them. Um, they weren't interested in selling them. They actually asked and requested that we not take them to the dump. Um, because they would end up back at the auction house. Um, we donated those to the Santa Senior Center. They were happy to have them. And they were going to make them part of their, some sort of auction that they have, so was happy to make that happen. Um, had a meeting last Friday with Friends of the Newby Park with Mayor Hopkins. Um, Councilman Jacobson was there. Um, Friends of the Newby Park, uh, Councilman Jacobson, correct me, that, that is the correct name of the group, right?
Yes, it is.
Friends of the Newby Park, okay. Um, they are trying to take Newby Park, which is a 90 acre parcel over off of Newby Road, and turn that into a place where you, Girl Scouts, Troop 200, can play soccer and baseball and football, listen to concerts, walk, walk your dog, have fun, and enjoy what you have here in North Pole, very similar to what they have in Davis Park. Um, have you guys ever been there to Davis Park? The soccer fields, the baseball fields, Hezray Park, close to the Dipper? Lots of fun, yeah. So they're trying to do that in North Pole and, and have that be for North Pole, which I think is super important. And, uh, Councilman Jacobson and I are, are trying to work to make that happen for North Pole. So we'll continue to work on that to, uh, try and make that a reality. I worked a little bit on the protect grant. Um, geez, I'm sorry, I'm rambling on here. The protect grant language, it's for proper drainage over off of Homestead Road, Patriot Drive, all the way down NPHS Boulevard to include First Avenue. Um, to try and improve drainage over there, so we don't end up flooding our neighbors, our streets. A couple of years ago, council approved a big snow hall because we had a heavy snow year. I don't know if, if you guys remember that or not. Um, but we're trying to improve the drainage through there with new culverts and improved drainage ditches to make that happen. Um, so we're working on that and moving that forward. Other than that, I have enjoyed, um, various lunches here over the last couple of weeks with the departments in the city. Um, last week I, I got to sit down with the fire department, uh, crew A, I believe, and, uh, have lunch with them, which is exciting. If you haven't done that yet, you really should. They're super wonderful group of folks. Um, the week before that, I got to take out our utilities folks to lunch. And, uh, appreciated, uh, sitting down and talking with them and hearing what they have to say about things that really should be happening in our city that maybe aren't, or ideas that they have about our city that, uh, could be done. So it was an inter- always interesting lunches. Um, tell them a little bit about what's happening here as a council and inform them. A lot of times they don't watch these meetings or listen. Um, so it's a great time to kind of bring to them the things that we're doing as a council. Um, to help them do their jobs better or allow them to do their jobs better. Um, with that, I think I'm done and ready for any questions. Okay, seeing none. Moving right on to citizens' comments. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for citizens' comments?
I don't have anybody signed up online for citizens' comments. I don't know if anybody in the room wanted to sign up for comments? No, Troop 200 has nothing to say, and that's okay. Um, so I will just read, any person wishing to speak needs to sign up, uh, for the list, uh, on the list that's located on the public testimony table. Respectful standards of decorum and courtesy should be observed by all speakers. Remarks should be directed to the council as a body rather than any one member, uh, of the council or staff. Comments are limited to five minutes. And I am, uh, nobody's signing on up.
Okay, that runs us right on to communications from department heads. Chief Dutra.
Kind of nervous with all these people here.
It's nice, isn't it?
Yeah.
Make sure you set a good example.
Yeah. So, uh, good evening, council. Uh, we had Polk Safety Assistant Ellingsworth just returned from SRO training and we sent him off because obviously he works in the schools, although he's not an SRO, which is school resource officer, generally a police officer in the schools, but he's the next best thing that we have since we don't have someone there. So he attended that training because of the VIP from Fairbanks paid for a majority of the cost for him to attend. Like we, we had to pay for the hotel for the, for the two of them to attend, but they paid for the fee and the flights and things like that. So we ended up with a pretty good deal out of that. And he learned a lot about the schools, school related issues, like the drug trends, the vaping trends, you know, how they're dealing with these issues in schools down in Arizona now, uh, across the country, that kind of stuff, social media interactions, school threats, assessments, and active shooters and so on. So it was a quite an in-depth course for him to attend. And since he's in our schools and doing the majority of the lift for us, and I thought it was a, a great, uh, great opportunity for us to send him, so, uh, pretty neat stuff. But we also got the new, uh, new Jag vehicle has been purchased and the old one's off getting repairs on the window and get detailed and, uh, send the tires down and, uh, Mayor, Mayor negotiated a great consignment for about 19,999, I think. Uh, so we should see, hopefully we get it. It'll be the most we've ever gotten for, for one of our cars. It's pretty cool. Officer Ride, as I started the FTO process, Elena Miller is 100, did the, uh, completed the 100% audit of, uh, the evidence room, so that's pretty cool. Something we require whenever it goes from one person to the next, it has to have a 100% audit of everything that's in there to make sure they concur what's in there is on the inventory and it all checks off. So, um, we had a clean audit, so that's good. And, uh, I did give you a stats from January for, um, there's a slight increase obviously in calls. Um, most everything else seemed to be fairly consistent, uh, no surprises there. Um, DUIs are pretty consistent from the year over year, so I can answer any questions if you have about that. Now that's all I got.
I do have one question, Chief, through the mayor, if that's all right?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, with, um, Mr. Ellingsworth going down to that training and receiving all up-to-date information, is there something that he's linked into to gather more up-to-date information as time goes on? Like, uh, latest, um, latest drug trends, social media trends, stuff like that. So it's just not February 2025, but he's got contacts to um, keep him up to date with that stuff. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and generally that's they do at these courses, they, they networking and, you know, having folks, you know, email lists and things like that and you get plugged into the community pretty, pretty good, so yes.
Awesome. He's a perfect person for that, so that's, that's great.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Shall we go right down the line? Miss CFO, Madam CFO.
Good evening. Um, Michelle, uh, who don't normally does our bank recs, took a little one week vacation, actually was not a full week, but so she came back last week and she was working on the bank rec on Friday. You know, she didn't complete it, I don't believe, and, uh, then she had an appointment out of the office today. Uh, today we did get our, um, AMLIP, um, statements, so I'll have that to report to you. I think I'll just send out an email once Michelle's done. Then we did also transfer the a million dollars to the water, uh, and sewer reserve funds. We opened up two accounts for that, and so we are seeing the first part of that interest this, on this statement. So, um, I don't have a lot to report to, but there's a lot going on. We just didn't make the deadline for this meeting tonight.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Yeah.
Evening, council, Mr. Mayor and Troop 200. Good to see everybody. Um, just one thing to report tonight from the fire department. Um, applications for the 2025 apprenticeship program are open. Um, we're receiving applications already. Um, we're getting a lot of good feedback, so we're expecting a pretty good application pool for this, uh, this next coming year's, uh, apprentices. Um, the current apprentices are doing well. They're, they're performing their duties as expected. Um, and, uh, we have high hopes for them in the future and high hopes for the, the next ones coming. Um, and that's all I have tonight. I can answer any questions if you have it.
So I saw that you posted that on Facebook, so I shared that last week. Um, I see that it's getting quite a bit of traction. Eighty or so shares plus a couple hundred likes. I think that's real positive and, and shows dedication by you and your department to make that happen for the city of North Pole. So thank you again for putting that together and bringing that to our whole interior.
Oh, you're very welcome and, and thank you as the council and mayor for supporting this program. It's been overwhelmingly successful and overwhelmingly received by the public, not just here in North Pole, um, throughout the interior and statewide. We get a lot of feedback from other fire departments and other communities that, um, are looking to mirror type of, uh, the program.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I was going to ask one, but you answered it already, so, uh, other people mirroring our program. Yep, that's good.
All right, thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk?
Um, I, well, I'm happy to see Troop 200 here. I see our future firefighters, future police officers, future clerks. Uh, so cool that you came. Um, I did want to thank the council for, uh, approving us having President's day off. It was a wonderful, relaxing weekend. I got to go to Anchorage and see my dad. Uh, so thank you for approving that for us every year. Um, I, Maggie did pass her SHRM test. She's now a certified SHRM professional. Uh, she got her certification and, um, I was going to have Maggie come and give a report, but I thought maybe this would be a long meeting and the next meeting. Uh, so if you guys have any HR questions, she'll be attending the next meeting. And that's it for me, unless there's any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that takes us to 10 ongoing projects. Zero, um, no unfinished business. That takes us to 12A. New business. That brings us to ordinance 2025 dash zero one and ordinance amending the 2025 budget for the very first time.
There, introduce, uh, ordinance 2025 dash zero one and ordinance amending the 2025 budget for the first time.
I'll second. Thank you for bringing that, Councilman Claus and Councilman Williams. Ms. Fogarty?
Yes, uh, just like I said in the meeting of the whole, this is just to, um, I do, it's a, a budget, uh, fiscal note to, um, budget for some things that we had been talked about, the $300,000 for the DEC permitting. Um, and then the fire department, um, uh, grant that's on the, the agenda tonight, as well as the, um, State of Alaska Natural Resources Grant for playground upgrading.
Okay. Any questions? Madam Clerk? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Jacob, uh, Claus, did you have a question?
Uh, no, I just kind of moved to.
Just getting ready. Madam Clerk?
On ordinance 2025 zero one and ordinance amending the 2025 budget for the first time, Ms. Clack?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Glab?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Claus? And Mayor Church?
Yes.
That's a seven to zero.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Okay, seeing none. Moves us to item B. Request to counsel to accept the 2025 volunteer fire capacity grant for $9,967.39.
Move to introduce and accept and approve the request to counsel for accepting the 2025 volunteer fire capacity VFC grant of 9,000 $967.39.
Second.
Councilman Claus, you're on top of it tonight. Thank you. Madam Clack, thank you. Appreciate that. Um, Chief?
Um, went over it pretty thoroughly in, uh, meeting of the whole, but to get it on the record, um, this is the fire department's official request to the council to uh, to accept, uh, the VFC grant in that amount stated. Um, the VFC grant is through the State of Alaska Forestry and is intended for, uh, purchasing of wildland equipment from municipal fire departments. This year's purchases will be, um, um, personal protective equipment for our staff, um, uniform type stuff and gloves and helmets. Um, there is a 10% match, um, that, that'll come out of our uniform budget, um, that matches that, so, um, it'd be, uh, definitely, uh, well-spent and well-used as we do every year with this grant, so, um, we just formally request that you accept it.
Okay, Chief? Any questions? Okay.
Move to accept.
Second.
Okay. Perfect. Madam Clerk, do we need to do anything else with that?
Yep, I'll call the roll.
Thank you.
On the motion to accept the volunteer fire capacity grant for $9,967.39, Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Ms. Glab?
Yes.
Ms. Clack?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
Yes.
And that passed seven to zero.
Anyone? Would anyone like to change their vote? Okay, thank you. That brings us on to Brookside Park. Phase one.
Mr. Kern, would you like to, uh, step up, please? Before we do that, the, the ask here tonight is for me to write a letter and to accept this into the city, is that correct?
Yep, you accept the improvement, which is the pavement, and then you assume the responsibility of the maintenance.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, since this is my first time accepting a road into the city, um, what are the parliamentary procedures that, uh, we would need to take to make that happen? Do I need to bring this to the floor in anything other than we already have?
Nope, just the standard, uh, we need a first and a second discussion and any comments?
Okay.
Move to approve and accept, or accept and approve the Brookside Park paving and path phase one.
Second.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilman Claus. And Ms. Glab. Please. Jerry Kern, welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. Um, give us a report on, on your project and, and talk a little bit about what you'd like us to do this evening.
Okay, um, I am going to just kind of review this that we did in the medium of the whole, so that I don't get on a rabbit trail, because I can do that pretty easy. So this is just kind of refresher a little bit. When dividing land, roadway access must be provided to accomplish that. For Brookside Park, four store, four streets were needed. The developer secured approval for the roadway locations and design from the Fairbanks North Star Borough and the city of North Pole. Prior to the city's acceptance of the work, the developer is required to maintain those streets, like snow plowing and brush clearing when needed. After the city's acceptance, the city will assume responsibility. We're here today asking the city to accept the work on Blanket Boulevard in Clearwater Court. During dedication of new subdivisions, the roadway, it's called right-of-way, is actually dedicated to the general public, so that it's already been the property of the general public since 2019. Um, because we didn't have sufficient funds to pave the roads initially, like a lot of developers do, and we're running an estate, we got permission through a developer agreement to delay putting the final code on, which is the asphalt in D1, until we had the sufficient funds to do it. And our deadline was 2034. And, um, the property sold off so quickly that we are, I would say dumbfounded, we're just in awe of the blessing. Um, especially for the beneficiaries of the estate, because we've been able to pass off a lot of funds to them and then be able to save enough money to pave it, so uh, we are quite pleased to come in here long ways before our deadline of 2034. And, uh, this summer we'll be back again to ask for turning over the maintenance of phase two, which is Salms Boulevard, which goes by, uh, Three Bears. And it already has a bunch of improved properties on it, homes and rentals.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you mind calling the roll? To accept these roads into the city of North Pole?
Okay, um, Brookside Park paving and path phase one, uh, was first stood and seconded by Santa and Ms. Glab. Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Clack?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Ms. Glab?
Yes.
Mayor Church?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's a seven to zero.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none. Thank you for your report. Thank you for your dedication to the city of North Pole and, and. Thank you for your report. Thank you for your dedication to the city of North Pole, and thank you for allowing us to take over this wonderful road. And the walking path, yes. Okay, that brings us to item F, request counsel. State of Alaska Grant Agreement for North Pole Highway Park Renovation.
Move to present and approve the request to counsel State of Alaska Grant Agreement for North Pole Highway Park Renovation.
I'll second it.
Oh, I can't call that. That was too close. Madam Clerk, you'll have to call that.
I heard Santa and Williams.
Believe Ms. Clack was right in there at the same time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
It's all good. All right, discussion.
I think we need to clarify it's the North Pole Highway Park Playground Renovation.
Okay.
The subdivision is called Highway Park, so it's not it's somewhat misleading. So it's Highway Park Playground Improvement.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilman Jacobson. So in the packet here, I don't know. Madam CFO, would you like to come and just talk about this real quick? Sorry, we really should have a Director of City Services to speak to this, shouldn't we?
That's that that would be his role, you know, and the grant, there's three roles. There's a project manager, which at this point will be Cody. There's an elected official, which will be Mayor Church, and there's the Finance Department, which is myself. So the when I was reading through the grant paperwork, I didn't see specifically that it was for one specific park, but we're calling it the Highway Highway Park. I know that's the one that Cody has planned on and budgeted some funds for in the in the 2025 budget. I think that if we get if if the project goes along, I think we can also refurbish maybe the Fifth Avenue Park. But I I will not be the project manager, so that's I I can try and answer any questions you you might have. And I I believe it was called the Hippo Park. I don't know if it's still called the Hippo Park. Okay.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on this?
On the State of Alaska Grant Agreement for the North Pole Highway Park Playground Renovation. Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Clack?
Yes.
Ms. Glab? Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Claus? And Mayor Church?
Yes.
And that passed by seven.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none. That takes us to council comments.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Jacobson, I always have the person on Zoom go first, so you're winning the prize tonight.
All right, thank you very much. I'm very excited about the acceptance of the Brookside Park Paving and Path Phase One Road and Pathways. That's just going to be just the beginning of new development for housing in our community. And I look forward to the next time the state certifies our population count that we have a much higher count than what we were given by them this year. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Ms. Clack, we'll zoom on to you.
Well, I do agree with Jeff on the Brookside coming on board, and we're getting ready to add new families in our homes soon in that area. And I want to thank the Girl Scouts for coming out. I did have one request, and I hope it would be all right. I'm a Girl Scout myself, so would it be possible for you guys to do the Girl Scout pledge? Would you stand and do that? Would you stand and do that? And may I join you? On my honor, I would try to serve God and my country. To have people at all times and to identify the Girl Scout law. Thank you, lady.
Ms. Clack, did you have any other comments?
That would be it for this evening.
Thank you, Troop 200. That was wonderful. Mr. Keller?
So I just went back like 20 years because I'm actually an Eagle Scout with Boy Scouts of America. Probably one of the youngest ones at age 14. Because I had to have my Eagle Scout Award before I could drive. That was our family rule until my younger brothers and then my parents kind of anyways. I'm the oldest of seven, so you know how parenting goes sometimes. So I I thank you for coming. Thank you for coming because that brings back very fond memories of of Boy Scouts and and what it did to help me become who I am. True words that if you let them into your heart, they will lead you for the rest of your life. All right? So Boy Scouts oath is a little different, but very similar wording. Serving God, serving others, helping others at all times. And the Girl Scout Law, the Boy Scout oath and law. So I urge you to continue to remember those things. Continue to memorize them because even 30 years later, you can still recite a lot of them. Because it becomes a part of you. And if ripple effects continue, like if you skip or throw a rock into a pond, the rock just doesn't make a dip where it goes. But there's ripples that go forever away from it. And that's what you can do in your community. Now in your classrooms or at home as well in the future. Okay, so think about that. So thank you again for coming. Thanks for memory lane for me for 20 years ago. So I did want to come and give a little report. I was actually at Chamber Commerce meeting today with our Congressman Nick Begich. I had the privilege of sitting at his table, and I tried to eat my food as fast as I could before he sat down, so I didn't wasn't one of those snobs with food in my mouth. Right? Because you got to watch how you eat in front of other people. It takes a lot of practice. I'm still working on it. Don't talk to my wife about it. All right. So he talked about some things that are concerning to us, including the EPA thing that Mayor wrote letters to him as well as the other delegates from our area or that represent us. And they are going to be addressing that themselves. And but at the same time, he is also buffering that with making sure that we have healthy air for us. So another thing is extending the tax cuts so they don't expire at the end of this year. Oil, gas and mineral development, making sure that we push forward with that. And the current administration is heavily in favor of that. And that's what Alaska, the state, was based on and why we came into the Union. He also talked about lowering the cost of energy, bringing the gas line in. He gave us a little bit of insight with that. The United States partnering up with the Japanese Foreign Ministry to get that off of the ground and actually drilling and getting that coming through Fairbanks. With that, that would actually decrease the cost of energy. That would decrease the cost of almost everything in Fairbanks. Cost of living, cost of manufacturing, cost of actually smelting some of the raw materials that we have in this area. He, Mr. Begich, actually says he sees that Fairbanks could actually expand tremendously. I forget the word he used, but it'll probably come to me at midnight. So he was super excited about that. Once again, he's heard from Fairbanks about the EPA. I'm pretty sure they all got inundated with communications about that. One of the questions that was asked was what is what are one of the what is one thing that you've learned since being sworn in? And the one thing that he says is that it's surprising to him that is about 75% of the legislation that is passed is bipartisan. Meaning it doesn't matter if you're Republican or Democrat, 75% of the stuff that's being pushed through and passed is involving both parts, both sides of the of the aisle, which the media does not tell us. So I think we need to quite understand that as a public, our representatives are coming together for the common good, though we are not hearing about it. So that is that is awesome to hear. So and then also one thing that he said that the healthcare in Alaska is the highest than the rest of the Union. And then we, as the United States of America, have the highest cost, but some of the lowest outcomes with our healthcare. So hopefully, things will change with lowering the cost of energy, lowering the cost of living, and then also enticing better healthcare, better outcomes. So it was really awesome to hear some of his ideas. And and to really actually, I was the only elected official in that meeting besides him because we actually stand and introduce ourselves. So but it was it was a great meeting. This is a good meeting. I'm excited to to see some of the things coming forward. Little tiny things, the apprenticeship program, having a second year, that is super exciting and to hear the success that it's going. Once again, the ripple effect, I'm excited to see what happens in years to come. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Let's skip down here. Mr. Claus?
Thank you. Well, I've heard the word blessing a few times this evening, so I wanted since wonderful Girl Scouts are here to share Santa's blessing with you all. Blessing is may each of you enjoy a lifetime that's filled with happiness, peace, good health, prosperity, and most of all, love, the greatest gift. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claus. Ms. Glab?
Well, first off, I want to say, Shandra, I'm glad to see you back in chambers. We've missed you.
Thanks.
I'm very happy that Ms. Nikki arranged for all of you guys to come tonight so you could see how we do things for our meetings. I know some of you, but not all of you, so I'm very happy to see you here and all the smiling faces and how well you guys have paid attention to what was going on. Mary, I'd like to tell you thank you for the work you've done to get the things pushed through and try to get those extensions and the work done for the parks and all of that. I know it's a handful of things to do, but it is appreciated. And with that, I'm going to pass it on to Benny, I suppose.
I'd like to say deal on everything that these guys said, okay? And you guys are the best audience that I've seen that come in here. You were quiet. You were attentive. You listened to everything. So I'm looking to see you probably the next meeting or the next meeting, okay? And then you can always pass this on to other individuals in the schools. Hey, guess what I went to? You ought to try this. Get their thoughts going, okay? Everything we talked about today was awesome and on time. We all know that it's going to take time for us to do things. And you know, I always say we got to work together, you know? And that's what it takes. Even when you're out there trying to bring other people in to step up to the plate of anything we do, sometime it's hard. You know, everybody's out there trying to do their thing, and then with everybody losing jobs supposedly. It's going to be difficult for us, but we can make things happen. And work together as a what? Team. We got to work together. And I dropped the mic to the mayor.
I'll pick up that mic because nobody likes drop mics. Unless they're Mikeonikes, right?
Everybody likes Mikeonikes.
So thank you. I I think all of you are North Pole Elementary School students, right? All but, well, thank you for your science fair projects today. I got to come by and judge and check out and see. It was a wonderful afternoon and very exciting and inspiring to see young people do such great work with science, math, use your head and make that happen. I I want to invite everybody to the North Pole Elementary School Stream Program. That's tomorrow at 5:30 to 7:00. And and Stream stands for Science, Technology, Reading, Engineering, Art and Math. All right. So that's that's tomorrow at North Pole Elementary School. They will have a planetarium in the library where the kids can crawl into a tube. Oh, oh, am I ruining something? The girls in the front are very excited. A planetarium where they'll get to see the stars, so it's super awesome. Troop 200. Thank you for being here this evening. It has been an honor and a pleasure. And I hope that you will come back at least, at least twice a year to enjoy this wonderful experience. You have been the most wonderful guests that we have had. Sat very patiently and quietly through all of the city business, which is sometimes a little blah, blah, blah compared to what you're used to, and it's just an addition of school. But it is super important to how the community is run. And the decisions that this council makes, if you decide to live here, may affect you in 20 years. So as blah, blah, blahs it seems now, in 20 years may be very, very important. I kind of thought it was blah, blah, blah when I was your age, too, and here I am, the mayor. It's scary and exciting at the same time. So remember that. Anything that you want to do, all you got to do is put your mind to it, put effort to it, and you can make it happen, okay? Okay. Back to business. Happy Engineers Week. If any of you gals want to become an engineer, this week is your week. With that being said, the city of North Pole is still looking for a Director of City Services engineer. I would very much love, love to see you just turn in a resume and apply for that position. It has been vacant for a while, and we are looking for someone exceptional. Three Bears. Benny, thank you for bringing it up that if you were jobless, Three Bears is getting ready to open up Ace Hardware within the next two weeks. And they are looking for people. So if you are out of work and need a job, that is a great spot to go, close to home, right here in the city of North Pole. And it's exciting to see that side of North Pole expand in leaps and bounds. Thank you for for what you have done. And your group has done to bring development to that side of North Pole. It has been needed for so very long. With that, thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you for filling the house. And have a wonderful evening. Drive home safe and enjoy the weather. Take care and good night.
Ooh.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Santa and Anton. We are adjourned. Thank you, Troop 200.
Okay. Looks good.
Thank you, Lila, for attending by Zoom.